Hi, good evening, everybody. Is the chair, oh, I should wait a minute, I guess.
Everybody's in.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School Committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota.
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Mary Brantley.
Yes.
Yep. Mary Brantley.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Natasha Rivera.
Here.
And Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
Jeff Ferrante.
Yes.
Charles Gabron. Oh, he's muted.
Yes.
Brian Haas.
Yes.
Wayne White.
Yes.
And then Annie Knechka.
Muted.
And Kate, too, is muted. Thank you. And Kate's muted, too. Hi, can you, can you, um, can you confirm that we can hear you? Yeah, okay. Um, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely is allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on June 16th, 2021. An act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue providing live adequate alternate means of public access to deliberations of the public body instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open meeting laws requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law and regulations, such as the requirements regarding posting notice of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate minutes remain in effect. Public bodies are reminded that notice of all meetings must be posted at least forty-eight hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays, and the meeting notice must clearly specify how many how the public may access the meeting, whether in person, remote, or both. This committee is convening by Zoom video conferences posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Use the raise your hand function now if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting so that I can make note of it. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2021-2022 Agendas, under the tab Agendas, under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety at three hundred and fifty-word limit as suggested, statements longer than three hundred and fifty words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or three hundred and fifty words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The Chair will read only one statement from each citizen, however, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the Chair via email up until the end of the meeting, explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the citizens' comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Either Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speaker concludes their remarks, I will ask each member in turn if they have a single comment, question, or motion that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the Chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So roll call to come to order. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Brantley.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
And Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
And Hillary Griffiths, yes. Okay, um, so the first item on the agenda is citizens' comments.
One.
Okay. So this is from Nicole Carlin, 22 Driscoll. I am ready to ask the school committee and the school building leadership to remove the plexiglass in the lunchrooms. Jesse confirmed last week from contact tracing and school testing results that COVID is not being transmitted in schools at a high rate as previously believed. Maynard has a high vaccination rate within the community and in the school. All school-age children are eligible for vaccinations. Vaccination clinics have been run in our schools and the vaccine is available at local pharmacies. At-home tests are widely available from the school, the federal government, and at local pharmacies. The following surrounding school districts do not make their students sit behind plexiglass at lunch, including Acton, Sudbury, Stowe, Hudson, Sterling, Natick, and Franklin. These school districts have deemed plexiglass to be expensive and ineffective at providing substantial safety advantages and a waste of resources to try to keep clean every day. In addition to resembling a prison visitation room, the plexiglass in the lunchroom is smeared with food, drinks, and God knows what else. Students regularly just talk around it or turn to their friends sitting behind them, and the plexiglass has proven to actually disrupt clean air circulation. Please remove the plexiglass in lunchrooms immediately and let our children be social and enjoy their friends at a clean lunch table. Thank you. There aren't any additional ones, right? Any, okay. The next item is urgent business. Brian, do we have any urgent business?
No, everything will come up during the meeting tonight.
Great, thank you. So student representative report. You're muted.
Um, so we don't have many updates for today, but we do have a few. Um, so the mall trial team, we did lose our first or our last competition by one point, which was kind of a letdown, but that's okay. But on a lighter note, one of our track members broke the high jump record yesterday in our track meet, so that was exciting for the track team. And then Kes, the rest. National Honor Society was able to hold their induction ceremony, which was postponed before. And twelve new members were inducted, which was cool. And then actually, the music, the Music Honor Society was able to hold their induction ceremony as well, which was kind of like a, it was a bit of like a concert, and it was kind of a fun event for students to be able to like, do like little performances throughout, so that was also pretty cool. And there were new members inducted to the Junior Honor Society and the Honor Society for that, so, yeah.
That's really awesome.
It's awesome, yeah. How did midterms, oh, I was gonna say, how did midterms go last week?
They were, they were good, yeah, a lot of the midterms were just like projects and like not like traditional tests, which was very helpful to students, I think.
Thank you, guys, that's really exciting to hear about the track record and the National Honor Society and the Music Honors are really impressive. It's exciting that that's able to happen even while COVID is interrupting so many things. Congratulations. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, is there anything that you're looking forward to coming up in the next couple of weeks?
Um, I think a lot of, I'm trying to think, actually. Everyone's really excited for February break, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I guess in the next couple of weeks, it's, I think the beginning of term is always pretty exciting. There's like a lot of new big projects coming up, which is always fun, and it's good that like, um, the student council is kind of resuming meetings and everything's getting back to normal after winter break, which is, it's good to get back into the flow of things, I think. I don't know about Annie.
Yeah, I think of like the basketball teams, they're having like their senior nights, too, those are coming up. Right. So like their last games of the season are approaching as well.
Fantastic, nice.
Anybody else?
Just thank, yes, thank you, I know that, um, coming out of the, all the COVID fog and midterm fog, glad to see smiles, and so, um, I know getting in, celebrating on-site was really a great change, so I'm looking forward to having more of those opportunities. It just feels good to see people in person. So, anyway, and, um, and just actually, Brian and the, you and the staff for the Honor Society and the students, all that they did to put that event on, just kudos to, to all the students with their achievements and the staff that really are providing mentorship there.
Thank you both for taking time to share with us tonight. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but unless you want to, but I appreciate. Yeah. Thank you both.
Thank you so much, thank you, good seeing you.
Um, the next item is the 2022-2023 calendar and contractual holidays. Brian?
Yep, if, well, you've all seen it. I don't know if Colleen, if you want to share the screen or if you just wanna, we surveyed the teachers in terms of when they would prefer to start, whether it was before Labor Day or after Labor Day. And overwhelmingly, they preferred to start before Labor Day, and I think the survey is actually in your folder. It is, so you can see that. Struggling here with headphones today, I don't know why, I'll just hold it. So you can see the start date potentially would be on the, proposed calendar would be Monday, August 29th, with two professional development days for teachers, and then students beginning on the 31st and having two days of school, and then the four-day Labor Day weekend. There are several early release days, which is typical for, for Maynard, for professional development, conferences, a variety of different things happen on early release days, as you can see. They're highlighted accordingly, holidays are also highlighted. So we didn't highlight the last day of school because it's likely to change, as in tomorrow's a snow day, so that would change that, but it's potentially the fifteenth of June next year, that is, if there were no snow days, but I wouldn't put that in stone at this point. So I don't know, that's what the, this is pretty typical with the admin team came up with. We looked at early release days, we looked at professional development, tried to align them up with when things are happening with during the year. Also tried to look at months where there were vacations and months where there were no vacations. So you'll notice March has three professional development days because that, if you're in education, March tends to be the long month, there isn't a break in there. So to have a couple, you know, three early release days to focus on teaching and learning, give students a few hours off over the course of the month feels like a good move. So.
Thank you, um, do people have questions?
I do, I do, yeah. I'm wondering what the May 5th, why it's red?
It's a no teach, no school, no school because it's a teacher professional development day. So that would be our third full professional, professional development day.
Okay, so that, okay, I see, all right. That was my only question. I do like this layout a lot, a lot, it's much better than previous years.
And on the back, we will have, so we didn't do the backside because you don't have to vote on the backside per se, but it'll have holidays and it'll have, it'll look similar to some, some other districts that you, I'm sure, have seen. So we'll have holidays for a variety of religious groups, and then indicating, it'll also indicate like if they begin in the evening prior or the day of, just trying to make it easy for people to remember and recognize that, especially if it's a holiday that one doesn't personally celebrate.
When will, Brian, when do you think that, I know that's really a lot of Colleen as well, with that forward-facing document might be available for the public?
The backside?
Yeah, just the whole thing.
Probably in March.
Okay. I did have some other questions, I don't know Hillary. If that, is it, okay, um, so a couple of things, I do like the layout and I appreciate that, a couple of things I noted, which I would want to see if possible, on the old version, we had like a sentence about the school committee meetings are held twice a month, and I had like a link, are we able to put that here, like on the bottom, or is that something that you would think that would be on the, the other version, I don't want to lose that because it might be helpful for people.
We can make sure it's either on the front or the back, just to,
Okay.
I'll work with Colleen on formatting on where that fits.
Okay, and then a couple of other, one is just clarity, and then another is just more of a question substantive. The breaks, so it says on here, February 21st to the 25th, but I think it's the 20th through the 24th. I think the dates might be a little, because I was looking at the one this year, it has the 21st to the 25th. And so I didn't know if that was maybe just a copy paste thing, because it,
You're talking about in the middle, in the middle section, right, Natasha?
Yeah, I see how like the highlighted part is 20th through the 24th for, for next year, but the dates are this year's 21st to the 25th. So it didn't, um, yeah, just some small, if there were some, you know, copy paste things.
That's the same for April.
Yeah, exactly, I saw that for, for April, so just maybe if you could, I'm guessing the highlighted dates are the ones that were, were going on, but that would be some edit.
We'll address those.
Okay, and then the other thing I noticed was the kindergarten start. And that's a little bit different, I saw that your, your feedback about it. Can you kind of clarify just, or just kind of elaborate a little bit more on that approach and, because it would be different for the community?
I would, I can have the principal talk about that at some point. Basically, they, you know, their thinking behind that is to have kindergarten start earlier and do the assessment at the end of the year, so they're really ready for school at the beginning of the year, as opposed to doing the assessments at the beginning of the year, which they've done in the past, but then it really puts them, you know, a little bit behind in terms of having the kids come in and start school. So they would prefer to start for kindergarten and preschool earlier.
I mean, um, later, right? Yeah, yeah, okay, it's, it's a week, because it's the following, right, to this other student, so it would be, it would be K, it would be first through 12th or starting on the 31st, right? And then it's pre-K through, if that would be, if that's possible to get clarified a little bit more on there, because first day of school, maybe on that line.
We can say.
Just clarify that that's really first through 12.
Yep.
First. And then the jumps out a little bit more, and then the, the September 6th doesn't really, it's not highlighted, but I saw the line where it talks about the first day there, so I didn't know if that would want to be noted as a significant day for, for those groups. And there is, Brian, different learning time for pre-K or for K, right, it's not the same, right?
Correct.
That's, that's just also, yeah, I remember reading it somewhere, and I don't know if it's like five days or, I don't know, less, but I thought that was part of the reasoning also, that it doesn't require as many.
They don't have to do the 180, the 180 days, because that was my question, too, okay?
Okay, that, that's, that's really it, I appreciate the effort in kind of revamping this and supplementing it, so thank you so much, you and Colleen and team.
And thanks for your comments, we'll make those adjustments.
I had a couple of questions.
Questions, yeah.
I could, so it was just, and it was just more, just to balance it out, so I noticed that the last Friday in January, the 27th, there's the early release, and then the very next, next Friday is the same, and we were sort of in a pattern of every other week, so I'm wondering if it would make sense to change the 3rd of February to the 10th of February, if there is, maybe it's, maybe it's conferences or something, but it would just, rather than two consecutive weeks with, you know, four day, four full days, maybe to have it every other week. Like I say, it's consistent the rest of the way, but I didn't know if there was a reason that that wasn't the case.
I don't know.
Does Colleen, maybe Colleen knows?
Yeah.
Is there something? It didn't say anything on that. Schedule.
We have several days this year, we've always had days that are back-to-back in the weeks for various reasons. The principals did sit down with us and went through this thoroughly for early release days, but we have had, I don't think there's been a year where we haven't had back-to-back Fridays on occasion.
It just seems like there's really, unless there is a reason, there's no reason to, to not have it every other week, just, you know, you hear from parents, just, it seems like every time we turn around, the kids are, have another early release.
And some of them are due to conferences, I think some are just Green Meadow or just Fowler.
Yeah, didn't say anything.
Versus the schedule, that's why I asked, but, okay, and then there was just one typo
in the middle where it says no school for May 5th, no school, it was just two Fs for professional, so just a little typo.
Because it's extra perfect, it's professional.
Really, really, really.
Professional.
And then, and then I thought it was a good thing that we're not closing the schools for, because of the election days, but I guess my, my comment would just be, can we just make sure that maybe we don't have outside recess or outside classes that day, because there's, especially with all four precincts being followed, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of traffic with cars, so I know we're trying to get the kids out in that, but that might be a day that we might want to keep them in. So, and that was it.
Thank you. Um, I, do you want to go first, Hillary?
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I thank you for, I think this is very humane, I think that you've done some really nice things here, we're thoughtful, I noticed the March and with the holidays, which I think I mentioned before, making sure that the Christmas holidays don't start on that Friday, it starts on a Thursday instead, and the Thanksgiving holidays looks nice. So it looks like you were really thinking about making sure that people were having, you know, like were, were being treated well this next year, which I think is going to be important, every, you know, all of this is so hard all the time, so I think it's, it's nice to see that that is thoughtful that way. I like the new layout, I think that's great. If, if you don't mind saying more about how kids will be safe on those voting days, it might be nice to hear that. Sure. So, yeah, go ahead, if you want.
So basically, they use the auditorium at Fowler, which is that front room where we've done vaccine clinics. It's sort of a rollover cafeteria this year as well, but they have a police officer on duty, we cordon off the lobby of Fowler, so they come in, the doors that face the auditorium is the only space they have access to, and then they can leave either the same way or they can go out the back. I call it the back door, but on the parking lot side toward the back of the auditorium, there's a door as well. And they're still working out the logistics on that, they may in fact move two of the precincts elsewhere. Greg, we, we had a meeting yesterday with, and Greg was part of that meeting, and talked about voting and said, in the past, they've been able to use multiple spaces, but because we're having school, it'll be cordoned off, there'll be a police officer, and there's only access to that one room, so you may want to look at a different place. Space outside of the schools for two of the precincts, or I'm confident you can fit them in there, just how they set them up. So that's really how they, and then they won't have access to the rest of the building. And then our kids won't use that space on that day, which they don't need to.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, again, I'm more worried about the cars and so many cars moving around and that kind of thing, so, yeah, I'm not as worried inside.
Just also, they, with basic now, I know that they're, they got through in the, in the afternoon from the library to the cafeteria, the gym, so there's a lot of kids kind of going that way. So I'm glad that, you know, you guys are really being thoughtful about that part, because that was maybe a newer-ish with their program to consider. And they do go outside in that parking lot, like toward the playground as well, they do kind of cordon off some of that back parking space to allow for, for that, for kids, you know, sports and kids are playing in the playground after school, so. I know it was really, just in thinking about other precincts, I know it was a real big push to not have more than one because of savings for staffing and what that took for the town clerk's office, so I'm, I'm assuming that that's probably what Greg is also thinking about as well, is that the staffing, you'll have to increase staffing and, and whatnot, and.
I'm sure that's all part of it.
He sounded open to working with the schools to make sure it works out successfully.
I'm wondering if, if that money that they're saving, if it can come into our budget for next year.
Oh, Mary, you're so silly.
Pay it forward.
Well, just like the money we save for benefits for the Excel staff, how that came and helped us later.
Anyway.
And then, when do we get to see the back of the calendar, do we get to see that at our next meeting when we're voting on it?
That probably won't come out for, until March.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that comes out to us at the same time as it goes out to the public, we don't get to?
No, I'll, we'll get that to you before then, I just don't want to promise it by the next meeting.
Okay.
But the calendar, I know we need to get done and get, get you to vote on that at the next meeting, but we'll work on the back.
Okay, and I'm really glad that you pulled the teachers and gave them options, I thought that was really great. And I saw, yeah, that's an awesome idea, and it's in, it's in the contract.
Yes.
And that's, that's awesome, so, yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
So I really like the calendar and I'm really excited for the information that will be on the back to help us be more inclusive. One question I had, and not for next year, because I, I think this works out well for next year, but is there a way for in the future it to be possible to not have only two days of school the first week? The parents that I know who are able to stay home seem to really like having only two days of school the first week, but the parents who I know who, both parents or, or single parents and have to work or find it really hard. I've been there, I have had to pay for camp that week and send my daughter to camp on Monday and Tuesday, and then send her to school on Wednesday and Thursday, and then send her back to summer camp on Friday. And it's, it's, I know other, you know, parents who have tried to find babysitters for three different days that week and miss, you know, pull things from different places to make childcare work, and then for kids with trouble with transitions, it's like you go through trying to transition to those two days of school, and before they have a chance to get comfortable, then they're out for four days. And particularly trying to send a kid that has trouble with transitions back to summer camp after two days of school was tough. So I didn't know if like we could try to think for next year about an alternative there, although I know that people are kind of attached to this way in Maynard. I thought it was worth talking about and thinking about.
But Hillary, they do, in some other districts, they do start earlier that week before, too, like they go all the way, like some, I mean, there's every, but I did see a couple, because I was looking at some, sorry, Monday, and then they did have off like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, where they started earlier in the week. I do like the idea of the two, the professional development days. I really appreciated. That I feel like with all the new things that might be coming in that. It's really great for our teachers to get that time.
Hillary, we can certainly explore that. It's, it does get challenging because it's a matter of how early do. Teachers want to come back and then as Natasha mentioned, we really feel like the two professional development days is important. It's just a lot to get done in one day. It's really not a reasonable task. There are so many moving parts to starting a new school year. But I'm not saying no, we will absolutely explore it.
Yeah. And I will say that as a classroom teacher, I'm a high school teacher. So that's, I know different. But, but I will say that having those, that two day start is often very useful for the kids and for us, you know, because that is. That that's when you have your class pictures. That's when you have your class meetings. That's when you figure out where your lockers are. And so it's like, it's like this little time when you get everything settled and then you come in the next week and everything is go. And so, and so that is that that can be kind of a nice transition because it's not all at once. It's just like, come on, settle, settle, settle and let's go next week.
And I've, I've liked it a lot too, because it's a good transition for the kids as far as you go two days and then you have four day week, weekend, and then you have four days. So it takes you, you know, so it takes you three weeks before you're into the.
I also don't like.
Where it's really helpful for neurotypical kids and it's a disaster for kids. That struggle with transitions.
True.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
I do also think about when we start after the Labor Day, like a lot of others, then you, when you have snow days and whatnot, then you're going into like late June and we've gotten. Like, you know, thinking about that, that part of the end, I've always been hesitant to start a lot later. And also to that point. Finding that in between buffer, you know, because camps often end early. And so then you have this window for parents who have to work. Then there's no place for them, you know, their kids to go sometimes when it's too late when school's starting. So that also is something I've been cognizant of and thinking about. So I've always appreciated that there is a place where kids can start a little earlier. I don't know what that sweet spot would be, but.
And then if you start, then if you start later, you end up pushing into. Camps that start.
Earlier.
Early, not earlier, but you know, a lot of, you know, a couple of the camps that I wanted to send my kids to. Start like the, the 20th of June. And like if they're going into that whole week, that. You know, that doesn't work.
Yeah. I know it's tough. I just thought it was worth talking about and thinking about a little bit because I know that.
Sorry.
I know that it was really hard for my daughter and it was hard financially to find childcare and or to do camp. And I know a lot of parents that I've talked to have found it really hard. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was thought about.
Yeah. Yeah. But I wonder if we're thinking about, is there, should we think now about ways to be creative with basic even, even potentially for next year? So that the kids can have maybe a smoother transition or something that first week. I don't, I don't know about if that's a possibility.
Well, we talked about potentially having that trend like before school, right? Last year it worked well, but I think the announcement of having that transition camp. Happened before school, I thought was very helpful. So I don't know if that's going to happen. This summer, I know we talked about doing something similar, but doing it earlier. That might help. I think some of those transitions to get your feet wet, the kids kind of come in the building, a couple. Period, you know, days, but I think it requires a little bit more planning on our part. To get the dates out so parents can, you know, can they do like a half day at basic? You know, if that's the case, because I think the programs were only a half day or something. And so just. To support those working families. In that way, if possible.
And also the Boys and Girls Club.
Right.
They close the week before.
But maybe, but maybe we had that conversation with them.
Right.
That they, maybe they can change that. So. Anyway.
Yeah.
Good thought. Good future conversation.
Yeah. We have good resources here.
Okay. Are you ready to move on to the budget presentation?
Uh, Colleen's got her hand up.
I think we need a vote on the contractual days, do we not, Colleen?
Uh, this, yeah, we need to settle this for payroll and stuff. It's not really calendar related. It's just.
The days.
Us 12 monthers. This is the proposed dates. Most of them are.
I thought that we were voting on that the next meeting.
I mean, you could vote it on tonight. You could vote on next morning. It is on the agenda. And it does say that you can vote on anything on the agenda. It's up to you.
Yeah.
Um, well, we, we did make a promise that we tried to like to not vote on things that night. So I don't, I don't know.
This, this is payroll related too. So we're just trying to get ready for next.
Oh, you're, you're in 2022.
This isn't really a school calendar. This is more, these are holidays.
I'm, I'm fine with voting tonight.
Yeah. So is it okay for us to vote on just the contractual holidays and vote on the calendar at the next meeting?
Definitely.
Great. Okay.
Because I don't think any of these.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. Um, um, and there is just to highlight one edit. I think Colleen maybe hovered over it a bit so that. Uh, that second date is 2023. So that was just a small thing. So, um, so I'll make a motion just as with, with edit. I'll make a motion that we approve the FY, or sorry FY calendar year 2022, 2023 holidays for. School year, 14 day contractual for fiscal year. With edit.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call vote or discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, Mauro?
Yes.
Um, Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And then at the next meeting, we'll vote on the calendar, the start date in the calendar. Okay. So updated budget presentation.
So I will do this with Colleen's help relatively quickly. I'm not going to go through each slide like we did last time because we've done it a couple of times. We've done it once for you. We've done it once for the Fin. We've shared it with the town administrator. So I'll get to the changes. Just in the essence of time, if you will, Colleen, want to? Go to the next slide, please? And the next slide, like I said, we'll get to the changes. You can keep going. Thank you. Okay. Keep going. All right. So this one, again, no different. But it just shows the increase. Keep going. It gets more interesting, I promise. So this, there is a change here. You can see what our original request was at the top, the 22 million, 28,934 and what it included. And that really matched very closely with at the time, the town administrator recommended budget. It's funny, there's a.
I think there's another one. Yeah.
Colleen, can you open the other? Because instead of TA, it says town administrator, which I know is not a big deal to anybody but me.
I think there was one that got updated today or last, yesterday, right, Brian?
I think it, there's a newer one.
Yeah, because I have it.
Yeah, it says updated.
Kind of love the Google Drive. There's so much information in there. Sometimes it's hard to find it.
The one that's in our file for tonight is the updated one that says town administrator.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Hi Wayne, we're talking money. I knew that'd wake you up. I'm just kidding.
It's before nine o'clock.
I know. We're going to roll. There we go, Colleen. Keep going. I can see that screen. Okay. Yeah. Look at this one. Nice slide. Can you do view, like make it bigger for it? Yeah, thank you. I can actually read it now. Sort of. So what you see is we started, we were very close to the town administrator. We were within literally on a $22 million budget, we were within $2,500 of that number. And then they had to revise it for a variety of reasons. And then there was a bigger difference than there was a revised budget as, as of a few days ago again, and this number is a moving target. So I don't want to get us stuck on the town administrator revised budget because that number continues to increase incrementally. I expect it will increase yet again, probably.
Oh no, Brian froze.
Oh dear.
400.
Uh, Brian, you have to go back. I don't know.
You missed you for a minute.
Yeah.
You lost me?
Yeah, yeah. You were frozen for a bit.
Oh, sorry. Am I back?
You're, you're back?
Yep.
Okay. The town administrator budget changes. So I don't want us to get hung up on. The exact number at this point because I do believe in conversations with the town administrator that that is, that continues to fluctuate in our favor. Um, right now. So right now, as of February 1st. They've increased from the 21, 463 up to 21, 558, 595. So the delta is still.
Oh darn. Brian.
Based on.
We lost you at Delta. You're freezing up. You're freezing up a lot. We lost you at Delta.
Yeah, the Delta is still.
Is still 470.
Okay.
So it, we're about 2%, that's a 2% increase. I don't know what's wrong with my internet and I'll be, here's something funny. No one is home at my house right now except me. So I can't blame any of the kids. It's all something wrong. Colleen, next slide, please.
Brian, can I ask a question about this one? Just real quick, because I know we talk about like the contractual. Obligations that we have, but we also have expense contractual obligations with vendors. Right? And I know those are the, some of the expenses that are increasing more than. 1.5 or 2% annually. So. I just want to clarify here that what we're saying is that this supports really the contractual for the collective bargaining. However. We're seeing other expenses rise in many ways above that. So we do, I just know, I'm looking at Wayne because I know we've had these conversations. So. I don't want to give the false, like, you know, this does not mean our total contractual obligations for all expenses. It's only wages that we're talking about, but there are other contractual, like transportation intuitions that we're still, that are rising above this rate, correct? Okay. I see Wayne's head nodding. So I just want to make sure I'm capturing that or emphasizing that correctly. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for pointing that out. And next slide. So here, and again, I'm not. I don't think it's necessarily worth reading all the changes. I will point out some of the ones that I think are more key. And you are, you know, you have this and you can look through this. So for example, the athletic director. I do think is worth talking through because it's a, I think it's a big price change. So in our ask is $60,000. That's kind of what we attribute to a beginning level teacher, if you will. But in order, and so the explanation is our current model. If we have a teacher. Who acts as athletic director, we pay a teacher a salary. They get a stipend. And they get a reduced class load. All makes sense. No argument from me. But in order for us to pay that teacher. Pay the stipend. And pay someone else to cover the two courses, the two classes that that person then doesn't teach. It costs us in this example, if it's a middle level teacher, they make about $85,000. They get a $10,000 stipend to be athletic director and we pay another person $34,000 to cover those two periods. That the athletic director teacher is off. That totals $129,000. So that's all I need to remember is 129. To go to a full-time athletic director, we still have our full-time teacher making 85,000. But there is no stipend. There is no additional periods that need coverage. There's a full-time AD. Who up to, you know, is in this example, making $60,000. So it's $145,000. Which. The difference though, and that's kind of the key thing here, the difference between our current model, which is outdated. And the recommendation, the difference is only $16,000. Which I don't have to belabor the point. I just wanted to point that out because I think the explanation is noteworthy in that example. I think in some of the other things. It just, I've just added some specific information, for example, EL, the English language learner teacher. It just puts in, quantifies that and saying we have 19 students, eight additional students who have identified. So just to put quantify that we have. A significant number of students who require these services that we need support in helping. Another example, so last one on this page for you, from me. Would be the central office clerical. So this one's kind of an interesting one. I almost need Greg here to get him on board, but he's on board because he knows this. So central office clerical support, one of the things that we have done in the past. Is really worked pretty hard on Medicaid reimburse.
Oh darn.
School department does all the work. I froze again.
Yes, you froze at reimburse.
Reimbur- reimbursement.
Yes.
The reimbursement, the school department does all the work. And when I say all the work, it's. Not only are they delivering the services, but they're tracking it, they're filling out the paperwork, they're submitting everything to Medicaid to get this reimbursement. And it can be upwards of $100,000. It can also be really low at $15,000, depending on how well you're doing it. It gets a little, everybody gets their hackles up, if you will, because the harder we work, the more resources it takes from the school department. The money does not go directly back to the school. This is just a fact. It goes to the town. Now I understand we are one department in the town. So this is still a good thing. So I want to be very clear. I hope I'm not cutting out. We want to get as much reimbursement as we can. To support the whole picture here. It supports the town, which supports the budget, which makes a bigger pie, which we.
Oh man, poor Brian. Lo siento.
One of the things that we had talked about was splitting this position with the town.
So it is a.
Brian, we lost you a little bit.
Lost you again, sorry.
Mary was jumping in.
We've talked about this numerous years about.
We have.
But you, so I know you understand it. I just thought for somebody who might not understand it or might not be. Crystal clear about it. It is important. It does help. It helps on, if I look at it from. School department as it helps on the backend. It helps the overall town budget. And then I just. Sort of work it with hope, support, you know, with Greg, that, that then means money's coming to the school, not dollar for dollar. But he understands that we're doing everything we can to bring in revenue to the town. That's how I look at it.
Mauro has a question.
I didn't. When I first read this, I totally did not understand the explanation for the first. 1.0 athletic director.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a different way of explaining that because. The way that I read this was the full-time athletic director would be paid, be paid $60,000 on top of the 85,000. For teacher.
So maybe in parentheses next to the 85,000, you could put, um, you know, the teacher salary.
I think this is the one that I got, I got hung up on too, in the subcommittee at first.
Yeah. So I think it just needs to be explained. A little bit differently, like maybe saying that, that next to the, where it says teacher salary 85,000, say. Current scenario and then. With a full-time AD, say proposed scenario and then at, at the 85,000, just say. You know, that it's a different position, that it's not the, the AD.
Right.
That would make it a little clearer.
Right. It's like the teacher, let's keep it, 85,000 AD teacher salary.
Yep. I'll work on that.
The Cs, right? Plus $10,000, blah, blah, blah. Then AD equals 860,000 plus separate teacher salary for 85,000.
Right.
Yep. Yep. Makes a lot of sense.
But.
Thank you. So I will work on that. Execution, absolutely. Thanks for pointing that out. We want it to be clear. We want people to understand it when they see it. So.
Well, I, I think that's part of the, the struggle, right? Is there's so many moving parts sometimes with. It's not just direct cost, but the indirect cost, when you're trying to, you know, convey or explain the indirect cost. I think people sometimes get lost. And I think this was really a great approach to that. But I think without your context of explaining it, if someone just reading it on the paper, they might get a little like, whoa, it's, you know, larger. So I think the explanation is helpful, but. Reading on its own without the commentary is, it might, might be. The hindrance.
Agreed. Uh, next slide, Colleen, please. So now we, if you think back to the beginning of this, we started with the district. Now we're going to the individual buildings. And again. Saturday school and summer school. We've, I put in some. To quantify it. So it's about a dozen students for summer school. And why is that overly important to us? It's not a lot of money, but it is really important to a school like Maynard. So why, so for us, we have low numbers of students. So if one student doesn't graduate, it's like 1.5%. which really shows up as a big red flag on any chart anywhere. Whereas if we were El Gonquin High School and had 3,000 kids, I might be exaggerating, but they're a big high school. And if one student doesn't graduate, it's equally bad, but it's, it's a point two on the spreadsheet and it doesn't show up in the same way. So these allowed, you know, when we did this in the past, what we're, what we're asking for, had about a dozen students who were able to earn credit back and earn two classes so that it keeps them on track to graduate on time and it helped. And our goal, we want all kids to graduate high school on time. Like at a minimum, we'd love them all to whether they go to college or join the military or get a trade. But first and foremost, you have to graduate high school. So this is important. So that was the point of the explanation there. The phys ed teacher. Again, we have a 1.2, so it's really a point eight ask. So it's a little bit different. There were 48,000, but why is that one important? So years ago, the requirements for PE changed. It used to be like, I think when most of us on the screen, minus our high school representatives, went, you just took gym once or something, or you took it all the time if you liked it, but it didn't really matter. And now they have, they really want you to take a class a year. So it's nice that NIESC is coming to visit us, NIESC being the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And we're very reflective. We look at our programming. We look at what we offer, but they're also really useful because they will hold us accountable. So we don't, what we don't want is we don't want to end up on having to say, we're not accredited. Or we're accredited, but we're conditional because we don't meet this standard and we know it and we can do it. We can meet this standard by getting another PE teacher to then offer the students enough PE that meets that standard. And it also has another couple other sort of just benefits, if you will, that allows us to spend more time on health and wellness topics and it alleviates some of the scheduling issues that they come up in every small high school. We're not like, oh, we're doing something wrong. We're not. It's just a challenge. There's only, you know, there may only be one calculus class. And then that's going to, you know, butt up against something else, whether it's gym or music. But trying to really make sure that every student can take whatever.
Oh, Brian.
Contribute to that in addition to helping us meet the state. I see my thing saying I'm unstable.
Yep.
I mean, that's your ID.
For a minute. Yeah, it's okay. Yeah. Another piece, Brian, that keeps coming up is that by having these point four, a point four, a point two teachers, they get, they come to us to get their first footing and inevitably as soon as another full-time job happens, they move on. So it's more of a transition for us, which is never a good thing. So we found that with, especially up at the high school.
Good point. Thank you. So if we can go to Fowler, if you want.
Can I, can I just mention the Tiger program you had?
I was going to do that at the end because I have a slide that talks about the Tiger program. And it's to Natasha's point, that program will show up, that ask will show up in the high school slide and in the Green Meadow slide. And it wouldn't be a Fowler slide, but we already have it at Fowler, so I don't have to ask for it.
No, one thing about the, the, just specific to the high school, as I was reading this and processed this a little bit more is that adding the Tiger program at the high school also allows an opportunity for placement for kids to return to district, which right now, so it's not about only just retaining who we have. It's about us, I think as a district, committing, you have kids who are out of district, out of district in, in middle school. And by not having a program, you're basically almost committing those kids for another four years to maybe stay at a district. So I just want to, it's kind of both parts, right? Is how do we support the ones that are here still, but also potentially opportunity to find a place back in Maynard if, if it all presents and anyway.
So that's a good point. Thank you for bringing that point up. I, that is, fits perfectly in. Again, Fowler's ask, our ask for the Fowler school was around the literacy program. And we've done a literacy presentation. I'm not going to go into specifics of that, but the key is having an evidence-based literacy program that's aligned pre-K through five will help student outcomes, including MCATs performance and growth. So it's good for our students. It's about helping them become more literate. And then we'll go on to Green Meadow. I'm going to come back to the Tiger program. And again, we have something about the literacy program, which I just mentioned, and luncheon resource recess support, which we've talked about. Next slide. So this is a helpful slide. This one talks about our Tiger program, sort of in a, in a bigger sense. It identifies that currently in eighth grade, we have three students that are in the Tiger one program. What does that mean? It means we have three students that next year will be in the high school. And we don't want to lose them. We want to be able to have a program for them to be successful in Maynard public schools, in the high school. And then this talks about just needing at a minimum additional teacher, which is what we asked for. And it may require reassignment of one or two paraprofessionals to make that work. And again, there's some explanation just about what are the range of costs? If we can't service these students in the Maynard public schools, we still service them. It means they go to an out of district placement. They go to another school and we pay for that because they're our responsibility. And that ranges depending, and right now I will tell you, there are no seats. It is very hard to find a placement for a student outside of your own school. And transportation is hard. It's just, they're limited, but the range in cost is anywhere from say 70 to $115,000 annually for the program. And, okay, I'm just kidding. And then there's transportation on top of that, which is anywhere from 10 to 17, depending really on where the student, where the school is, how far it is from Maynard, things like that. And we do this year after year after year. So for three students, we could be talking anywhere between 240 and almost $400,000 every single year. So it's, it really is the Tiger program, both at the high school and at the Green Meadow. It is an investment within, to the Maynard Public Schools. It is an investment in the town. It's an investment saying, we can work with your students and we can educate them internally. So keep going and we're going to show, show you where these match up with state numbers. So this slide, and it does require some explanation. The substantially sub-separate, substantially, sorry, substantially separate, which is, if you look at the slide, it's a 6.9%. That's our rate. The state is 13.
14.3% is what the state target. I'll jump in, Brian, because I know you froze. Sorry.
Am I back?
You're back. Yeah, there you go.
I don't know why my internet is so portent. I do apologize. The state is actually looking to get that number up to just over 14%. That's the pro, that's the Tiger program. That's the Oasis program. These are the programs that are in your public schools, that are in the Maynard public schools. And that's how we service kids as opposed to the role below that, which is separate schools, which we're at 10.
Go ahead, Natasha, draw it. Go in.
Yeah. So basically the district is 89% above the state target of 5.4%. So, you know, when this conversation comes up in, in IP meetings with families, the district really doesn't have choices. It's either partial inclusion, or sometimes we don't have the capacity in-house to service. So then the only option would be an out of district placement. And so that's where the options for families to stay in district really aren't even always there to, to present to families. So that, anyway, Brian, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Can I just ask a quick question? You mentioned the Oasis program. What's the difference between the Tiger one and Tiger two and the Oasis program?
So Oasis is specifically for kids that are basically returning from a hospitalization and/or some significant mental health breaks and they're coming back in the.
Okay. Good question.
Yep. So I think Natasha kind of said, she's right. We really want to aim directly at this and really aim at those state targets. And we have a ways to go to get there.
And I know I'm preaching to the choir, but you, because you guys have heard this from me many times, but we used to do a better job of being able to keep more of these kids in-house. We used to have more programs and it was not, not only financially benefit, but better for the kids.
Oh gosh.
I'm glad we're.
Ethical thing to do.
Right.
I could tell you right now, no, no, it's a very traumatic thing for any parent to have to take their child away from their friends, away from the, what they know in their community and have them start over somewhere. So I think from that perspective, as we focus on social emotional peace alone, it's a huge, it's a huge issue, you know? And the statistics are when kids go out of district, the longer they're away, the harder it is to come back. Because, so I think that's the part that we just, this came up before COVID, so this is only getting more and more dire. So anyway, sorry, I just obviously get a little passionate about this because, yeah, yeah.
So we're, so this is hopefully to put a little context to the Tiger program. Okay.
I think it's hopeful because we can all know that ethically, the right thing to do is to educate kids in district. But and the town seems to need a little convincing to understand that we can, it's actually more affordable to educate them in district.
Right.
And agreeing to the, the small ask actually saves us a lot in the long term. And not just far off long-term, but next year.
Correct.
Which actually, Brian, can you go to the slide before that again? Because I think, I wonder if you can make that a little more scannable? That part is that you made, you made a paragraph. We are working to avoid having to, can you make that into something that's a little more scannable? You know, savings to Maynard and, and then this number, you know, transportation.
Maybe more, more bullets and so it's more like processable as, as opposed to like a paragraph.
Yes, versus blank, you know, so that, so that it's really, so like even because if someone's quickly going through like blah, 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 something about whoever won, this many people, who cares? You know, they, they actually stop there and notice that that's the important thing they need to see.
Yep, I can work. I'll change that up a little bit. No problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
No problem. Yeah, Colleen, you can keep going, please. Thank you. So again, this is really a summary of the last slides that you've seen that we've talked about. And no budget presentation is complete without Wayne's pie chart.
Like a good.
Nice job, Wayne. Thank you. Very colorful, very accurate. Much appreciated. Again, we're not going to, we added just so people were aware, S R one. And at some point we'll revisit the S R grants and do, and talk these through. But just so you know where money was spent on S R one, sorry, keep going. Yeah, no, you're good. I didn't mean to interrupt you. S R two. And then finally, S R three. So a lot of these are preliminary because in order to get a, in order to apply for the grant, you have to write something. We haven't even started to spend these, but you had to put things in buckets. So people understand nothing's been voted on or decided yet for S R three, for that matter. But if you look at it, you're like, hey, did you already spend all this money here, here and here? The answer would be no, but you have to allocate it somewhere so they can approve it.
So S R one, though, we was, was the one that's all done, right? That's the one we is, is already spent.
Correct.
Right? And then it's S R two and S R three that are still in flux.
Correct.
Right? I wonder.
You can absolutely hear from Wayne. We love hearing from Wayne. Wayne, you're on.
I just wanted to bring up the concept of supplement and not supplant in terms of the grants. And I think it's coming into play with our interactions with the town on the budget. And, and not to insult anybody, but to, to cover that for those that don't know, when you're giving grant money, it's supposed to add to or enhance what you're already doing as opposed to supplant or replace. So by that, I mean, you can't do, or you're not supposed to use grants to say fund your ordinary operations. It's something above and beyond. And so I think that's important that outside people look at between S R one, two and three. You know, we're getting close to $2 million. And they think that we're flushing money that, you know, we don't need the money we're asking for in the operating budget. When, as we all know, when we get a grant, you're very restricted around how and when you can use it and what you can use it for. So that doesn't touch anything that we do in the normal operating budget or any expenses may occur or programs that we want to add that are not COVID related. Everything in S R is COVID.
I think maybe that gets lost with the, the town because I think that they've, maybe their flexibility with spending the COVID money in the town on things that were already planned expenses. It's a little bit harder to understand how we have added COVID expenses to be spending our COVID-related funds on.
Well, Hillary, it was also mentioned, I think at FinCom about when, when it was talked about the percentage that was penciled in for that remember the school department got S R funds. And so I think that correlation is a mistake because the, just to Wayne's point, S R funds, that, that runs out. We can't build our operation budget around S R funding. So I, I think it is important to highlight and Wayne, thank you for, for bringing that up.
Absolutely. I just, I just meant that where the town is, you know, using ARPA funds for things that were regular budgeted expenses, they may think that we're, we should be using our S R funds for regular budget expenses instead of the COVID-related expenses that we're supposed to be using them for. Um, I just wanted to add to that we, we are planning to hear more about how the S R funds are being spent. And not the next meeting, the meeting after, I believe it's the first Thursday in February. And a lot of these items on the S R slides, you know, I, I.
I think we're the first Thursday in February.
Oh, sorry. I meant March. First, first, sorry, first Thursday in March. It's been a long day.
I know.
First Thursday in March to hear a little bit more what these are. I first looked at it and I thought, I don't know what some of these, these lines indicate. But we will hear more about. Back to Brian.
I tried to adjust my internet. We'll see what happens. I don't know. I don't really know what's going on. Colleen, you want to keep going? It's always just, you know, we're looking to increase these opportunities, whether it's student choice, college credit during work for students, WAVM, exploring different pathways and expanding them, whether they're in computer science and/or performing arts. So we're working on all of that. And that would be our update. And I appreciate the comments. We, you know, the goal is to make this have the quantifiable information and make it clear for people. So I appreciate the comments. I will work on those.
Brian, I know one of the things we talked about in our subcommittee was about the revenue loss also that we, that our budget has the, since FY 20, with the loss of College Gate. We've had to, for maintenance of facilities, we've had to rely on our operating budget more. And we've historically needed to do that. And that revenue loss hasn't been, you know, we haven't had replacement like ARPA. We haven't had any opportunity to replace that revenue loss, even though it is allowable by the ARPA program. It's not something that's been afforded to the school department.
Good point. And I think if, and I don't have that right in front of me.
I think it was 30.
I think it was about $31,000.
Yeah, $31,000 a year.
And we.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, so that's been about, it'll be three, three years that we've gone without it, you know, and hopefully we'll get that back in the next year or so.
I think that it's important, like in the past, I know there's been criticism from the select board in the town that the schools are spending money on different projects and different new novel ideas. And I think it's important to remember that this year, all of these paths have concrete impacts on the, not just on the volume of the kids. But on financially as well, because if we can keep kids in district. Through providing the services they need and through providing high quality education. Kids, we won't be spending money for special ed out of district placements and transportation. And fewer children will leave to go to AMSA and ACVIT and other schools keeping more of the money. For Maynard, and so it's, I know that. When they look at the town budget and talk about things like, you know, we, we need to fix the water in the sewer so that we can bring in more money. Or, you know, with obviously a lot of steps before bringing in more money. It's sort of the same situation with the schools, like we need to spend this, you know. Four, four percent wasn't a lot, and I understand it's a lot if, if, if there's a limited total pot. But they actually can have such an effect in terms of keeping money here. We'll have to do some advocacy.
Well, Hillary, also, I think, you know, um, I mean, I, I always said, and I've said this before, you know, education is also infrastructure. That we need to support aside from our physical, you know, infrastructure, that, you know, the, the cost, if we only get allocated a certain amount. Doesn't mean the, the expenses stop at that amount, you know, the cost, so, so we, we do, there is criticism that we ask over a certain amount. Oftentimes that's a result of a cut that we have to offset from a prior year, which did happen. You know, because the expenses don't stop growing, um, because we get less money in one year. So I think avoiding those cliffs, those extreme, you know, they don't want to see things that are over four percent or whatever, there has to be. A reasonable understanding that we have to meet that, you know, expense criteria or allow us the opportunity to reduce our expenses. So we're not needing to rely on that large percentage every year. I feel our hands are tied sometimes because it's.
Yeah. And I feel like there's little acknowledgement of what happened in the previous years, so. There's comments being made about how we receive S R funds, but there isn't similar comments mentioning that we've cut seventeen full-time employees in the last few, three years. Or four years, um, or the cuts, you know, in the past. And none of, none of these asks are, you know, fun, exciting new things that are but like above and beyond. They're, they're things that we need.
Thank you, Brian.
I have a question, um, so I think that, I just want to say that the way you presented it was very, very clear. So like what you said around the slides is very clear, do we need to think more about putting some of your, like, when you said, you know, if we don't have this gym teacher. Then we run the risk of not being accredited, and if we're not accredited, here there are repercussions of that. Do, does that need to, does that need to be explicitly on the slide, for example? That and the, and the thing about, um, and, and, you know, there's something else. Some, uh, you have the one about the central office clerical support, that's great, oh, that's what it is, Saturday, the Saturday in summer school. Um, you know, if these kids drop out, that's, you know, like every kid is 1.5 people, you know, percent, which looks huge for us, but not nearly as much for other schools. Um, and that's going to lose the town money because we look worse, you know, do you need to spell that out specifically?
I can try and work on that as well, I mean, the slides are a little busy right now, but I can adjust what's on there. I think to your point, really highlighting the key point, I can add that in.
And it could even maybe, maybe it like comes down to, because you know how people, like everyone just like, and, and what they remember the best is that what's at the end and the beginning a lot of times. I wonder if it's just a summary at the end, you know, like key points, bam, 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 bam.
I could work on that.
And there were some in slides, I mean, I know, Brian, I, this is, I mean, I know it's, I don't want to fill up the thing, but just for general com- context, I mean, Maynard. Looking at some of the D E C information, you know, it's pretty shocking that, you know, Maynard is eleventh out of the state. And how much we spend on our out of district expenses. That was pretty alarming for me to see that, how, how much, how close to the, the top ten, we were almost just out of the top ten for the whole state. You know, um, you have transportation costs for the twenty-two out of district kids is over half a million dollars. For twenty-two kids and not allowing us to, uh, uh, an opportunity to try to reduce that, to me seems foolish. You know, why would we as a, as a community say, let's continue to throw our money away on transportation instead of trying to help kids in our district? That's what it says to me, that's what, if that kind of decision, so if that's what I think the town wants to do, that's great, I'd like to hear that. But that's what that kind of decision is really meaning. When we are not appreciating, understanding that a million dollars a year in expenses going up annual is not stopping unless we do something different.
Yeah, I think they just don't, they probably just don't know that right now, so we just have to make it clear to them, right? Um, and then the other thing is the literacy, I wonder if there's something you can hi- highlight there right now, you have the Ed Reports standards for how they're grading. Then, but I wonder if something like we traditionally had a problem here that was, that hurt kids and here's how, you know, this is how it's going to help the schools. I don't know, if, I don't know if there's data that we can just specifically have for us there, but.
I can take a look at that as well.
Well, generally MCAS scores too, if you, you know, their cap, you know, when they, when they do that cap of what you're allowed. You fall and if you don't, you don't mean it, then you're, you get more kids that are allowed to go out to, uh, to AMSA or whatever, they don't cap it as, um, as much. So you have to stay out of that, I think it's like the top ten also, there's certain other criteria there.
Yeah, because again, what you said was very powerful, and I just want to make sure that it's also scannable.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, can work on that.
Yeah, um, I think that it's, it's, we're in a good spot, I think, um, with the changes that have been made. And getting preparation for the meeting. Are we ready for the superintendent goals?
Sure.
Okay, do you want to give an overview?
Sure, hopefully I won't freeze this time. Apparently no promises tonight, I just tried to fix everything. Uh, we'll see if that works, so I am excited to be here actually, and there were three large goals. And it's kind of funny, I think I, I've learned a lot in the last six months. Some of the goals might have been overly ambitious, to be quite honest. And there's a, there's a few things that have sort of played into that, that I just, I don't think anybody knew. So one being COVID, which I think back then we sort of thought it was kind of headed out, we'd have a more typical year. It's taken and still takes, um, a lot of time to do it and do it well. What I'm excited is about is that we have a team, so we've been doing it well, our nurses, our teachers, our administrators. Have worked really hard to make, meet every shift that D E C has given us successfully and keep our kids in school. And, um, focused on learning, so it's been exciting, but it has taken an inordinate amount of time that I don't think anybody could have seen. Also, I would have put, and I didn't, you know, I don't think any of us thought about it, the MSBA has taken lots of time. That probably could have been a goal in and of itself, had I thought about it back then and, uh, but that's okay, we're doing it. And again, we have a great team, if you, and I know some of the people on the screen, they were involved in, you know, just for example. We've spent nine hours in the last three weeks working, and that's just in the visioning meeting. And that doesn't even take into account the time writing and, you know, working on an educational plan, so there's a lot of really good things happening. And then another thing, good for somebody, but our assistant superintendent took an opportunity in October, which, good for our assistant superintendent. But it has created a little more work internally for, for, for me. So with that said, we're still doing really great things, and I'm excited about that. We, I had three goals and we're only partway through, so this is a nice formative assessment, just to check in for people. The first goal being, and I'm not going to read the whole document by any stretch, just to sort of, the focus on the first goal has to do with. Communication, um, and with families, with students and with the community. And it's a little more specific than that, but that's kind of the big picture of that one. And so some of the things that we have done this year and we continue to do is really have buildings use the smores in a consistent way. So they go out weekly. I know that I and others meet with, like, for example, we had a great meeting today with the Mara Group, the Maynard Anti-Racist Association. And CPAC, um, when they meet, you know, Jeff, who's online, our director of student support services, attends all of their meetings. I attend when I can, sometimes it gets tricky because I end up being double or triple booked. But we have representation there. We've done, we've planned originally to do more, uh, parent forums, but as the years gone on. So we chose to sort of take a step back because one of the things we've heard is that people are just zoomed out, they don't want to go to another Zoom meeting. But we, we have done, we are doing a literacy one, we will be doing a Spanish immersion one, and actually that one's kind of exciting already. It's about eighty percent of the way done, uh, two of the teachers have been working on that, um, I think you'll be excited to see that. And again, frequent communication around COVID has been going out, um, including, you know, our numbers, the state numbers, what we're doing. And really just trying to keep everybody informed on that. Still a long way to go, lots, a lot of other things that will be happening in the second half of the year. The second goal is really around instruction, student achievement and making sure that we're using, we're teaching grade level standards to all of our students. And they're getting appropriate tier one instruction. Which, of course, that is super important, quite frankly, that's what we're all about, is teaching and learning. So one of the ways that's shown up in the first part of this year is really around the literacy pilots, both at Green Meadow and at Fowler. And supporting those efforts that the teachers and the administrators are making to make sure that we're looking at resources and curriculum. And choosing appropriately, and also our M T S S staff. Which are at Green Meadow, Fowler. And really, that's helping teachers use data that they're collecting from their students to change their curriculum. Like here and now. And that's exciting to see that, that level of work from teachers at, you know, I, I think of Green Meadow right now. But a given team, like third grade, looking at all of their data and really assessing each and every student. And saying, oh, which kids are doing well, which aren't, and how do we adjust for that? So that's all happening, there's a variety of committees and subcommittees that have been happening all year. That sort of indirectly, but support the students would then support their education, so I'm not going to go into all of that. And then finally, the third goal. Is establishing structures and processes that promote collaborative inclusive cul- inclusive culture in the district that ensures equal access for all community members. Um, and this has taken, um, a variety of looks, of what does that look like for us? We had a really successful data walk early in the fall, we found some things that we didn't think were great about it and some, and some data. And things that we would do differently next time in terms of the data walk itself. And then we'll be meeting and talking more about that, um, but that, I think originally we thought we would have gotten further along with that. And quite frankly, I think other things just happened, um, I E COVID, and they take precedence over everything. Other things that we have done. With that, um, in terms of that goal though, have to do with. Facilitated book talks this year and really continuing the thought process around diversity, equity, inclusion. And what does that look like for us at the Maynard Public Schools and how do we look at that moving forward and what can we do? So one of the things we did, for example, which isn't even in here because it just happened. Is really reinvigorating our professional development committee with teachers. Who are then driving the professional development, and one of the things that's happened in the past is at the end of the school year, there's days where professional development happens. And Mara, that group, they may, um, be able to do some professional development for teachers who sign up for a given P D. I'll give Colleen, where's Colleen, she's on the screen, we'll give her props for this one, um, because she's really worked hard this year to further her own education in human resources. Because she in and of herself is our human resource department, so the fact that she was excited and willing and able. Took out, took this educational track on and got her certificate and has learned a great deal about human resources. Which in effect helps us as a district, it will help us look at our policies, um, and make, and job descriptions with an equity lens. So we are making strides, um, so I'm happy to hear comments, um, and take those, you know, and reflect on those. And, and build that into what I plan to do for the second half of the year.
Thank you, um. Thank you for putting this all together, um, for us and including everything, I think that there's a couple of things. That like, one thing, um, where you have that, uh, the community. I'm not finding it right now, but the community presentations have been delayed, um. I, I believe there's been at least three, um, between the COVID presentation, the beginning of the year, the suicide prevention one. And, um, there's another one I just, I just forgot. Um, I think there's been, there's been a few, um, and there'll be the literacy one and the Spanish immersion one, so I, um. I don't know if that could be updated to show that that goal has been started and.
Yeah.
It's not, um. It's not really delayed that much because I think three presentations are pretty good for four months, five months during a pandemic. I think also, I remember when Dorothy met with us, she talked about how the goals can be updated and changed over the course of the year. So, um, I don't know if that's something you'd want to do, but if there was something that doesn't seem like we can get to it this year. It doesn't have to stay as the goal for, you know, things can be flexible. Particularly given how much time is going into, um, crisis management. But I'll, like, we can go around, um, does anybody want to start? Mary?
Yeah, um, and that's, um, one of the things that, going back to what you just said, Hillary, one of the things that we did on the wellness committee was to actually have two-year goals. Because we're finding that it, it sounds easy at the beginning of a year to say that you're going to be able to get all this accomplished and then life gets in the way. But, um, Brian, I just, I had one, a couple of clarifying questions if I could first. So Fowler is doing the progress reports, yay, again, you're back to doing that. Are we doing that at the high school and at the, at Green Meadow also, or is it just at Fowler?
I will find it.
They're doing it at the high school, I don't know about Green Meadow, but they are doing it at the high school.
That's good, yeah, I didn't realize that that had fallen off actually, so it's just so down important, needless to say, for parents to know where their kids are. So, um, and maybe at Green Meadow, it's done a little bit differently, but not, not quite so black and white. Um, and the other thing, when I was looking at, is it the curriculum cycle, the review cycle? There were just some updates, like for instance, um, it said that, um. The, the literacy, the E L A, um, for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three for the literacy. I know this year we're doing the K through five, but, um, next year it was going to be six through eight, but there was no mention about. Doing nine through twelve until the year twenty-seven to twenty-eight, so I didn't know why. The literacy six through twelve wasn't going to be done next year. Just seems like an opportunity lost, and then there are some other cases where it, it talked about the different subject matters, but didn't say what grades. I'm assuming in each case it'd be K through twelve, but like social studies and science and that, so if it could just be better laid out as to. That it is in fact K through twelve, because I think that needs to be on New Bible. Um, I know we've talked about it before and there's been pre, pre U, you know, we, we talk about this cycle and, and that. And we always seem to fall off the wagon as far as really putting it into place. So, um, if we could really, really fine tune that and really hold, hold us accountable to that, that would be phenomenal. And then in terms of your first half year, I do not know how you guys are all doing it. I really, I mean, just, I, I don't know if I speak for everybody else, but just the subcommittees that we're on, it seems like every time you turn around, there's just so much work. So, and we're just a little piece of what you guys are doing, so keep it up, I think you're doing phenomenal and, um, you know. Like you said, I think we all thought that this year was going to be back to normal, huh? I don't know if that's ever going to happen again, but, um, but anyway, I really, really appreciate, um, everything that you've been doing. Because it's, and, and everybody, the teachers, the, the nurses, um, right down to the kids. Everybody's just really plugging at it as best they can, so that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I'll go next, um, Brian, I sent you, um, some of the feedback I had over email, so I don't need to say that out loud. I just, I, I do worry because we're so off track for the goals we set and the benchmarks we're going to use to make sure that they were being hit. So when I went through and saw how it's going to work out for the end of the year, it looks like a lot of them won't be able to be reached. And so like Hillary said, I wonder if, you know, given that the year has been so much different from how we expected it to be. If, if this is a time for us to really sit down and, and, and really think. About our new situation, you know, with no gen and with COVID still, you know, and with things where they are, you know, is there, like, what? about our new situation, you know, with no gen and with COVID still, you know, and with things where they are, you know, is there, like, what can be salvaged? What can we still get done? Like, for example, you know, goal, and I think it's goal one, that, like, the, you have the goal, the action item of looking at our current reporting home methods and then doing an analysis and upgrade to that. And I think you said in your, in your, your feedback you just gave us that you couldn't do that, but maybe we could just do the analysis this year, you know, maybe there are some ways to go forward. You know, the, the curriculum review cycle, you know, Mary mentioned, you know, maybe that is something we should look at again, given that, you know, where we are and, and what we heard in the literacy program last week or last two weeks ago. I wonder, you said in your, in your response that the culture survey, you couldn't follow to you, because of everything that happened. But I wonder, are you, are you going to do that in the spring? Is it going to happen?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, you have a tool in place, everything's good. Okay, so then there's a parcel meeting there, that's good. And I wonder if it does come down to, so, you know, the original community presentations were very specific about what they'd be about, and they'd be about curriculum and celebrating our schools, and that was the spirit of the original community presentations. And maybe, like Hillary said, some of it comes down to revising what they were about, because they had to be about COVID and they had to be about other things. And we do have, but so the literacy one was already on the agenda already, so that is good. So I think, so I think that I just, I think we should really take stock and make sure that we're, that we're trying to meet them. Instead, I, I don't want, everything is hard, of course I know, right? Of course. And I, and there's no doubt that you're working hard and that everybody's working hard. I know, because I know from being with you, but also because I'm in a school also, you know, and, but I just think that it's really important that, you know, this year doesn't fall into nothing, you know, that we do really work hard to do some, some, some of the things that we planned, even though all these things hit us anyway. And I, and I also think about how we do have to evaluate at the end of the year, evaluate you, and I, and I, and I, and so I think now would be a good time to take stock of that. And then just before we just, you know, before that, and figure out how to make sure that that end of the year conversation is a celebration. Yeah, so, so that's, that's where I am, I think, with it.
Thank you.
It does seem a little crazy that, you know, COVID takes up so much of the time, and that's not acknowledged anywhere on here. It's, it's sort of like, the evaluation is based upon such a tiny portion of your day and isn't acknowledging the enormous amount of work going into keeping schools open and running.
I will say that that's how goals are, right? So when I get my goals every year, it, like, that is a tiny part of my day, right? But that, that is the thing I'm using to think about innovating. That's the thing I'm thinking about, giving us accountable in the ways that I promised I would. And of course, I'm also doing one hundred million other things every day, because up, upkeeping a classroom and all of, everything that goes into that is so much also, right? So that, again, the goals are not supposed to ca- capture all the work that someone's doing. They're supposed to be like, these are the promises I'm making about how I'm going to move forward as a professional, so that I am doing the best I can for the schools, and the schools are innovating the best that they can also. And all of that's aligned.
I can go next. Am I frozen or is Elizabeth frozen?
I just had a couple of questions. In your, for the second goal in your mid-year update, you're saying that you're working with the leadership at Green Meadow to pretend to be able to potentially increase instructional time by ten percent. I'm unclear how that happens. How do you increase instructional time without lengthening the day? I don't, I'm not, I don't really understand how that works.
So that's part of the, that's a great question. Part of the budget request that the lunch and recess people, if we can fund that, that allows people to cover lunch and recess, because the way it is now, if a teacher does lunch and recess, then they get another period that they're off. So then the students, in effect, are going to specials twice a day at Green Meadow. And if we can change that moving forward, then they only go once. So it actually increases by ten percent the amount of time that they have on learning.
Okay, so I know previously that having the teachers cover lunch and recess was used so that there were, were less, less behavioral issues because the teachers with them all the day, all, all day. And, and I think that that's why that was put in place, at least that's what we were told when we, you know, when we talked about not bringing in lunch and recess people. So I don't know the, the whole thought process about changing all this, going back to what it used to be. So I'm just giving you just some, you know, kind of background. So I will leave that to you. Let me think.
Did have that conversation tomorrow.
Okay.
About how, yeah, earlier we did, but yeah, you weren't proud of it, but.
Okay. And I guess that's pretty much it. I think all my questions were kind of answered. From everybody else. Thanks.
Thank you.
Faro, I know that they, we were, we talked about that lunch and recess supervision, and they are planning to have consistent people there and hopefully try to keep them and train them and give them support so that hopefully they'll be able to have those relationships and support for dealing with behaviors and stuff as they come up. It was something that they brought up when they first talked about it. So it was part, it's being planned for.
Okay.
We have the same worry.
Yeah, I mean, previously, I feel like they had the same people there all the time. You know, unless they were, you know, out and they had to get a sub for those people. But, you know, the, the whole point of having the teachers do it was to prevent the behavioral issues. So and I'm not entirely sure with the whole, you know, going back to the way it used to be, are we then going to end up having more behavioral issues going forward? And, you know, it could, it mainly could just be, you know, a leadership thing, because I know we had a lot of leadership issues those couple of years that we, you know, were talking about those behavioral problems. So, you know, we, we can just, I guess, see how things go.
Brian, wasn't, I know, did they mention that the principals and vice principals may be out supervising recess as well as they sort of are occasionally now to, to provide support and supervision when needed?
That's true.
Natasha?
I just want to concur with some of the commentary about the COVID work that's isn't quite captured in, in some of this, and I don't know the right way to, to do that. If we look at maybe in have another goal that reflects, you know, like a new goal that was accomplished for this year, or we tweak or whatever, I just do, do agree. I mean, I think that's also probably the case for all admin and teachers as well. So I don't know if all of their goals are always updated for the same kind of reason. I'm just trying to think of like how, you know, because everyone's kind of
I think you have to leave COVID out of it, because it's
Right, you kind of, everyone's kind of had to, like, it's been, it's been a burden, I think,
Right.
for everybody. But so I would just was trying to think about that. I do agree that it doesn't quite give that, paint that picture of those other things that were happening. But I also wondering how that would be for all, all staff, right, in the district that are saying, same thing that they're dealing with. One of the things that I was using, Morrow's comment really kind of also for me highlights this is I feel that a lot of the, we just need a little bit more data, I think, to, to see the measurables of how, you know, how we're achieving, like the, 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 the lunch part, but the behavior. I think when it was changed, it was very, it was probably was changed without a lot of data to support that change, you know, of, of what would give it was more maybe anecdotal. And then I feel like now we're kind of taking that same approach to like, oh, now new people feel this way. So it's kind of like feelings versus, you know, data that we would, should be, you know, more relying on to kind of inform these decisions. So I would want to, you know, I looked, looking through the goal, the goal measures, there's a lot of surveys about, you know, that I would want to seem like, make sure that those are going to still happen. Because that is a very good temperature read of how things are, the community and the students and the staff are really, you know, appreciating what you're working on and how that's really kind of going, like the literacy program that was, we had that presentation on. They spoke about how they were surveys that were given out, that we would be able to see them. I don't, we haven't seen them yet. I'm hoping that we will see them at maybe the next updated presentation when we hear more about the pilots. But that's really what I would like to see more about is data. I love to look at that because I feel like it helps not just us, it helps us advocate better externally also, right? That's what, it, it sounds like that's where there's a large appetite in the, you know, budget, whatever, is to use more the data to demonstrate our decision-making, you know, and, and, and more. And so I think that is what I, I would like to see a little bit more in, you know, as we go on, so as we're being, make a decision, what is the data that's being used and, you know, that we reflected back on, like, like even something small, you know, back, really like the, the survey. And I know we've, we've seen it every year, but, you know, the, the calendar, you know, it's really great to see that there is just that effort, and it may be happening already in some cases, but I think it needs to be, you know, visually presented to the school committee. So we can kind of show that how it's, the community, it's a culture thing, that how we're using the, the data to inform our decision-making. And I know we have data teams too, so I really would love to see the work that they're doing within those data teams to kind of help inform some of this process. It sounds like it's really deep and great. Any way we can highlight that and emphasize like what the work that they're doing that's informing these things, I think would be super helpful along the way. And I kind of go through, oh darn, I just closed it, sorry. So, like the pilots and for the literacy, I know we're going to hear more about that, but that's something that I, the data, you know, informing that process. There's the conduct district climate and culture survey twice annually, exit, exit survey for, you know, that kind of data. I'd like to, you know, hear how we are doing with those type of action items that we've indicated. Are we on, on point with still doing those things or are we, you know, maybe that might be a follow-up, Brian, is that do we feel that those action items are still kind of going back to a best thing? Are we, are we losing a lot of that or what? And I know the DE, the DEI, you know, that takes a lot of work to look at that data too, right? For that came in from the data equity walk, and I, I'm sure there, that was part of what Jennifer, you know, her role was doing. And so I totally appreciate that, you know, manpower bandwidth hasn't really allowed the, the, the in-depth approach that we would want to take for that, right? You don't want it to be very surface. It needs to be in-depth. It needs to be, and I, and I think that understanding more how were you, how we're approaching data better is something I just want to see a little bit more.
Thank you.
Natasha, can I just ask about, so, so say that we change the, the lunch, the, the recess lunch situation. How do we, how do we get data to determine that that is working or is not?
I mean, something that, yeah, I would, yeah, I would say that, you know, you probably would want to look like the, the teams, internal teams of how many, maybe crisis they might be called. I know sometimes that transition, there's a lot of transitions, you know, when you have those many specials. And I think that's also data that's probably not really being appreciated. A lot of kids that young age, you know, sensory autistic, when you have added specials, each one of those transitions is another, you know, moment that could potentially, you know, a kid could be dysregulated. And so I think I do like the idea that we're lessening those transition, you know, moments. I think there's data just to support that fewer transitions do help kids. I think we haven't applied that logic in a way, you know, internally better, you know, to, to measure that, you know, how many, I don't know, how many calls to the principal's office, you know, how many kids, students get sent there? Those kind of things that I don't know what's being, you know, how it's being collected now, but I know that there are potentially ways that, that could be approached.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, to put that in place, to let, let the stakeholders know that that's, that's what everybody's going to be looking for. You know, upfront, so that then we can look at the data afterwards, if that's what we're thinking.
I mean, you have kids that succeed better, you know, kids that are success, you know, right, they're, they're succeeding, right? They're able to learn and
Yeah, you could just have fewer, fewer kids that have behavioral problems, you know, and so we're saying, oh, it's working versus the next year, there just happens to be more kids having behavioral problems, you know, that, that it's innate in them anyway. So that's why I'm saying it's sort of subjective. It seems a little subjective in a way, but.
I guess if we were, if we were collecting data after we did the change, right, from that point, we would be able to, that's what I mean. So right now it's hard to do because we haven't probably been looking, like, since they did that change when Morrow was talking about, you know, years ago.
There, could they collect data for discipline thing issues? And when children are sent to the office, they, they have, and we've talked about that in the DEI meeting, they track that. I don't know, I don't know if it tracks, you know, lunch and recess versus time of day or whatnot, but
Right.
They are tracking that.
Yeah. But are we getting, we're getting kind of lost in the weeds here, where there's a lot of, there's a lot of, this is, I mean, the things, like, I guess I'm, I'm sadder about losing things like, we've lost the, potentially the chance to work with district leadership teams to set clear teaching and learning expectations. Potentially, we've lost the, the staffing and schedule changes to improve effectiveness or professional collaboration time for all its own teams. So I think that there are, there are big things we had in our action times that were really pretty great. And I'm, and I'm worried about them because they, a lot of them don't look like they can happen now. For example, the one I just mentioned, the, the staffing and schedule changes, this is the month, February twenty twenty-two, which was to hear about what they recommend for the changes so that people could work together better. And that always works out better for students. So I think, so I think that that's, the bigger picture here is that, you know, these goals are made so that we are following the values that we decided were important for our school district. And then, and then it's our job to make sure that we're following them. We have a terrible year and a lot of things happened. So I just am saying that I hope that we have some action items after this, or somehow some way forward so that we're, we're, we're understanding that there is COVID and we did lose gen. And, and yet we are still making some kind of progress, and that might mean revising these, but I don't think it means discarding them. I don't think it means adding anything about COVID. I think it means being realistic now and still trying to do something.
But maybe prioritizing from the original goals for the rest of the year.
Yeah.
Sure. That sounds reasonable.
I would wonder, Brian, what, what you're, like, just hearing this high-level, you know, feedback and just looking at your goals, what are the ones that you feel that might be the harder to kind of complete by the end of June, that just from the time that you know that you have now and where we are and what you, what are the ones that you feel that, you know, might be the area that just, we may, we may see a different outcome than, than anticipated?
You're saying it's still doable? Is that what you're asking? It's still doable to do?
Well, just looking at the action items, you know, for each one, you know, and Brian, I'm sure you probably have done your own, like, you know, inventory of, you know, like, as you're putting your mid-year together and just kind of projecting, you know, in the future, which ones do you feel that you're, that might be the more challenging to, to complete in, in how they are written?
Yep, I'll definitely put that together for you and identify those at the next meeting. I can get you just sort of take all the feedback in and reflect on that process that through, and then set a clear path for the second half of the year.
And I also just want to say I thank you, because I, I don't want it to be, you know, I mean, I know, like, keeping, you know, the train going. I mean, I know I've heard great things about, you know, the staff, I mean, although everyone's going through so much, but that The staff, I mean, although everyone's going through so much, but that everyone showing up, everyone's there for the students, you know, admin, same thing. And so above all, above all, everything else that's happening, you know, learning is happening as well, things, you know, kids are excited to be in school. And so just the bread and butter of education is happening maybe a little differently. And so thank you for, you know, kind of being that crisis leader to get everybody through, um, this. So anyway.
You're welcome. And I will get you an update on this.
I also think that the budget proposal does a lot to move the school overall in the direction that we want to go.
Oh, absolutely.
In terms of prioritizing the kids, the high need kids. Um, and making responsible financial decisions and, you know, there's a lot there, um, you know, looking at the goals. You know, some of the things seem like tiny compared to, you know, the structural changes, like creating the tiger program. Isn't included on here, but it really could have fit into some of these schools too. Um, and in terms of being inclusive and creating an environment for, to keep kids in district and to. You know, so there's, there's so much that's good too. So I, I don't want it to seem negative. Um, even though we, we may need to refocus on some things and, um, prioritize.
No, I appreciate the comments. This is great. It's all about the power of yet. What are we gonna focus on and what are we getting done between February and June? This is helpful.
Right.
And what do you want, what do we want to do for next year?
Right.
All right, let's not look next year. Let's, let's just get through February to June and then we'll talk next year. Yes.
Okay, um, are we ready to move on? Yep, okay, so.
So I just, just to clarify, so, so we, we will be getting just a, maybe another just. Update at our, a future meeting is what, okay, thanks.
Um, do you want it to be a meeting, um, should it be a meeting or a memo?
I think we'll have to, we'll have to maybe do to approve them again.
I, I think the school, I think the superintendent evaluation all has to be public if I'm just recalling. So I don't necessarily, there'll be a lot of extensive time. It might just be more of a clarifying, but I just, I don't know. I, I have to, but I thought remember that that's the whole. Evaluation is, is a public, uh, for the superintendent, sorry.
I know if we were to change, take things off or change the actual goals that would have to be public, um, if it's, if it's less formal. And more of a prioritizing or like thoughts and updates, that could be a memo, right?
I think we should talk about it just one more time.
I guess it depends on what it is, like what we see, right? We might, if it's extensive versus just something here or there, you know, it might warrant a different. Discussion.
Okay.
I don't think it'll take long.
Yeah.
The February, the February seventeenth meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to check cuz I know, um, things are booking up into that meeting. Um.
We have cost centers. I know we have, we bumped that off the last meeting, but we didn't add that. I think that one needs to be added back in soon.
Yeah, that's on the list.
Beginning of March, but you can have it before then so that you can have, be thinking about it.
I just didn't want to commit to the next meeting because, um.
We've filled that agenda already. I want to like.
Yeah, and I, we've invited, I've invited people and, um.
We, we also, we had talked about having a workshop. Maybe we could do, if we have a workshop between now and February seventeenth meeting, maybe we could. Um, have the update at that time.
Yeah, that could be good.
Yeah, cuz I think we let Brian know, I mean, time's a ticking, so.
Yeah. Um, and I, we clarified with mask and we actually can vote, um, at a workshop as long as it's clear on the agenda that there'll be a vote. Um, so there's some flexibility with that. Um, are we good for moving on to the superintendent's report?
Sure. So you have, I obviously will not read it to you. I will talk about a couple of things. The one thing that will come up. After February vacation will be the mask mandate. So we know that we have a mask mandate now from the commissioner till February twenty eighth. Um, we'll need to, you know, start making plans for the what if, not knowing exactly what he'll say. It would not surprise me if at the end of February, if not February and March. What he, he wouldn't surprise me if it goes from the mandate to a strong recommendation, but do what you want at the local level. So we should be prepared to do what we think is best for our community at the local level. Um, and we have people on both sides of this discussion, if you will, and then there are people in the middle. Um, so just, I acknowledge that within here that that's coming and we'll be prepared to. Uh, make a recommendation and do what we think is best.
So is that something that we should put a survey out to parents and see or is that no? No, we never get enough return. We don't get enough, enough parent, enough response anyway to make it really valid.
That's what happened with the clinic, right? You only have like a hundred, whatever it was, forty responses and.
Right. I was just putting it out there so that it's not a surprise when it comes back up to you as a school committee and it will. And we'll have to, cuz we have a policy which will likely have to amend in one, some way or another.
I have one question about that. I know I've seen some schools that, um, update their policy. In line with the Desi guidelines, saying that vaccinated students could stop wearing masks and unvaccinated students would continue wearing masks. Is that at all practical? Like, is that even worth considering or is that, would that be so ridiculous to enforce? Um.
I think you're enforcing it on the honor policy.
Yeah, no, no, as in no.
But I don't think that's very reasonable.
Classroom, no, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, so Brian, oh, sorry, I was just quick while we're on there before, um, is, and I, the boosters. I know that we haven't had a booster clinic in, in the district, um, since that got, um. Expanded for the, the, the kids under, um, sixteen, uh, because it, the vaccine clinic happened the same day. And I don't think they were ready for it, but other schools have had it and I wonder if that might be. If that conversation has happened with our health agent to have a booster clinic. Um, in, in, for the, for the kids or anyone really, um, in district.
Hmm, I have not heard, I can reach out to John and see if he's heard anything about that.
Cuz they've, they've, they've sent, like, they post things, but they're like in the middle of the day for, um, you know, like Ashland or other towns. Um, and I know this part of the success of the clinics that Maynard had where they were after, you know, after school. Um, and here on site. So I'm just thinking about, you know, access and, you know, availability, that kind of thing, if that's possible.
Yeah, I can ask, uh, the board of health, what, if they're planning anything or doing anything. I don't think we as a school aren't. But I can say they are. Sure, I can reach out to them. Yeah. Um, a lot of what's in here is just COVID data. Um, luckily, our data is trending in the right direction. This week we have about three students at each building who tested positive. And one staff member in the district. Comparatively, that's, you know, from a few weeks ago, that's phenomenal. Um, the town, those numbers don't look as pretty in the town. We had a meeting earlier this week where I think, Colleen, correct me if I'm wrong. Cuz it astounded you as well that the number of positive cases in Maynard in January was just over five hundred. Which was similar to the prior year.
Um, or something. Whole year, yeah.
Right. So interesting. Um, but the numbers in school are really have gone down significantly. We've got on board with the new testing policy, so we've been sent, we sent tests home with staff. Um, they went home with elementary school kids today in the backpacks. Uh, they'll go home with high school and middle and Fowler students and high school students at the beginning of next week. So we'll be on that new track, which doesn't require contact tracing in the same way, which takes a whole layer of resources off and just time and energy. Um, that don't have to be expended that way. Um, some positive things, Kate actually hit our two big high school things, so good for Kate. I don't have to talk about them. I'll just say National Honor Society and Triumph Music Society. And Natasha was actually at the National Honor Society and they did have to say, you know, I concur with Kate, they, the, the teachers who are the. Um.
Advisors?
Who, the advisors, thank you. And the students just did a fabulous job. It was totally student centered and well done. Very, very nice. Um, at Fowler School, some exciting things, the archery unit began. Um, last week, the newspaper club has been kicked off. Um, and as we already talked about, Mary mentioned it, um, super exciting. We're back doing progress reports, which is just helpful. Um, letting kids know how their kids are, you know, letting parents know how their students are doing, super important. So we don't want that to go away.
And the kids, letting the kids know too.
Absolutely. Hundred percent. Uh, rehearsals for the musical, both, well, for sure at Fowler have started musical, uh, Fiddler on the Roof Junior. So it's just, there's exciting things happening, even in the midst of everything else. We're really working to get back to some of the celebratory things, the performance. The pieces, um, and the in-person pieces. Um, at Green Meadow, there's been work in phys ed, you know, the physical education classes with the, with the little kids. Which if you haven't seen it, you should stop by and see it. It's a lot of fun. Um, they're focusing on strategy and teamwork and playing different games. In art class, it's been the Crayola Creativity Week. Um, and at the Green Meadow Library, they've been reading lots of Caldecott Award winners. So when the new award winners are announced, there's some connection to that. So it's just exciting to see. Um, and, and be part of all the good quality things happening at each of the buildings. Um, going forward.
Also, the fifth grade is putting on their little plays of colonial times for the entire fourth grade, which is nice.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So that's what I have as an update for you today.
Okay, um, are, do people have questions?
Oh, I have a dumb, I have a dumb question. It doesn't really matter, but what, what is happening with the contact tracer?
So we, right now she's incredibly helpful cuz she's helping organize the eight, the eight hundred tests that roll in every week. And get labeled and distributed to the buildings, um, and supporting other pieces of the nurses, what they need to do. So we're getting that organized. We've only done it one time now and we get a double dose next week. So we'll get, because of vacation. So we'll end up giving out like fourteen hundred.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great.
Okay, um, I don't have a lot for the chairs report. Um, yesterday we had a leadership meeting with, um. David and Greg and, um, we talked mostly about the budget. Um, we did talk a little bit about, um, reinforcing to the community that, you know, nothing's final, that we're working on the budget. Um, that it really, uh, is a fluid process that will continue over the next few months. Um, my own message would be though, that there is an opportunity for advocacy. So if people are concerned about. Um, the breakdown of distribution of the town, um, funds. Um, that next week's meeting on February twelfth between nine and twelve would be a really great opportunity to hear from. The select board about their decision making, um, the different town departments, FinCom, the school committee. And really see the whole big picture, including things like the capital planning and, um. Just sort of get the whole big picture where all the different funding needs to go and what the, um. The aspects are that Greg is way and the select board will be weighing, um, and to advocate for where you think the. Um. The need is, um. Uh, I have reached out to Senator Eldridge and Representative Hogan, um, and are working on having them come to a meeting. Um, I'm going to meet with, uh, Kate Hogan on Saturday and talk to her a little bit first. Um, and then we'll be scheduling, um, a time. Um, and, uh, we. Uh, there may be a presentation two weeks from now at the meeting about a new solar proposal. Um, that sounds, um, pretty hopeful. It would only involve air locations around the high school. So it would avoid a lot of the issues with, um, the Green Meadow related space from last year. Um, but that's a little bit up in the air. So in terms of the meeting schedule coming up, um. There's a lot of topics for the next two meetings. They may need to be moved around a bit depending on, um. When the solar presentation is ready and our state, um, legislators' schedule. Um, and of a lot, some of the topics are pretty flexible to be moved around. So I, I, I hope to get to them all in those next two meetings, but they may move a little bit from where I've mentioned. Um, task, uh, topics following. Um, and I think that is it. Um.
Hillary, can I just ask a question about the Sola? Um, so who, who brought that back up again?
Um, it's the same, uh, her first name is Beth. I don't reme-
Okay, she did.
From last year.
That's great. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, I didn't realize we were still, cuz I know that they were running out of funding to, to support her, her role, right? She was funded through a grant, so. I wonder if maybe they had a new grant or something cuz I know that with that new legislation.
Yeah, I don't know the details about that. I just know that, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad it's being brought back up again. I was just wondering who initiated it. So that's great.
Yeah, I'm excited because I was disappointed last year when they mentioned that, um, by the time there's a new Green Meadow. We would be passed too far into the lifespan of the high school to add solar at that point. So I like that there's, um. An opportunity.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, um, for subcommittee reports and members' comments, um, Mary?
Um, well, let's see, um, this morning, Charles, who's still awake, um, and myself, at seven o'clock, we had our, the wellness committee meeting. Um, and we were fortunate to have Rachel O'Donnell, who is from Safe Roots to School. Um, she was, she was there and, um, really helpful and really wants to get that program back up and going again. Cuz it was going pretty strong before COVID hit. Um, and we also talked about, um, I decide. Um, there's a subcommittee that is working diligently on the wellness policy that will eventually come to the school committee. Um, for approval or for review and then, and then approval, um, within that. Um, let's see, that's, that's it for the wellness and then Brian.
Can we ask questions about that?
Sure, sure.
Okay, um, what is the safe route to school?
Oh, sorry. So, um, it actually, and Charles can, can, um, weigh in also. But I think it actually, it's actually started with, uh, Dan Costello at the middle school and, um, and they would have, uh, walk to school Wednesdays. Um, some kids rode their bikes, some kids walked and actually as a result of Dan's, um, uh, work on it. We were, we were given a, like a, a great, um, award as being like one of the, the lead, lead schools in New England. Of, of the Safe Roots to School and, um, most recently there's a grant that we've applied for because Rachel came. And talked about different places that we could have better signage and things like that to make it safer for kids to walk to school. So I know, Brian, I think you worked on it, Justin, um, Damaco, Charles did and haven't heard yet. But, um, so it's, it's that, that type of thing to get kids to stop walking or, or riding their school safely to.
So she's actually working with the town to help us make sure that the kids have, that's great.
Yeah.
And he, and he did walks on Mondays. That was to help, that was part of that, that project. That's awesome.
Right, yeah. And Brenda, um, Brenda Sullivan was part of, was, um, doing the walk to school and her daughter Cory was. So it was really, it was great. And we, we, for, I think it was two separate years, we tried, it was in February to have like a big. Um, you know, Green Meadow Fowler and the high school to have a big walk to school day. And I think both years we had a snowstorm. So it, it kind of never happened and then COVID happened. So, um, so that's where we are there. So it's.
I'm excited about that because, sorry, cuz one seventeen is always the scariest too. I'm glad to.
Exactly. And she's, she's very enthusiastic and, um, was really help, it was great to have her there this morning. Charles was able to get her there, so.
So I, I just add, if it's okay, uh, we've also, uh, had, uh, for several years, they presented bicycle safety. Uh, and, and pedestrian safety. Unfortunately with COVID, those programs are in, on hiatus, but we always took advantage of, of, of those. And we held the annual statewide, uh, convention at, at Fowler School in two thousand nineteen. I do believe, and it was, uh, very, very good, very, very helpful. So we've had a buddy history with them. But because of COVID, some of the, some of our initiatives have slipped a little, so we wanted to see if we could get back on track.
Yeah, it's great. Um, and then Brian mentioned the visioning, the Green Meadow, um, elementary school divisioning. Um, three, three different sessions that we've had. So last Tuesday was the, the last one. Um, so that we had a lot of great feedback actually from parents, from teachers and that to help us with the, uh, Green Meadow Elementary School. Um, project. Um, Beth, you can talk about the strategic planning. Um, and Natasha, you can talk about the budget subcommittee and then I've got a master plan meeting on Monday, I think it is. So that's it.
Right.
Thank you. Um, Natasha?
So I think for budget wise, we saw the revamped, we actually talked about the, the presentation we saw today. Um, and which was, you know, we look forward to that with how we can advocate and, you know, just clarifying the information. Uh, a bit better. We will be recommitting the budget subcommittee after, um, the, so I think the following week after the, the town budget. Review that Saturday, just to, um, process some. Review that Saturday, just to, um, process some more, you know, how the feedback was received and, and. You know, maybe any strategizing or further advocacy, we can support Hillary in any way. You know, I think we're all committed to whatever, you know, I, you know, we talked about maybe putting a letter. Um, school committee endorsement of certain things. I know in the past we did, um. Uh, we did that for when it went to town meeting, you know, uh, we presented like a school committee letter. So I, I think. For us, if we want to take something to that approach, I, I feel strongly that that's something we should really do this. I feel like it's really critical level. And I think clarifying, you know, to support Brian and his work and the town, um, the, the staff. I think the school committee maybe should commit to, to putting together a separate budget advocacy level of our own that we all endorse. Um, as well. So maybe for further discussion, but, um. You know, to think about and how with Kate or however that may work out. The other thing, uh, it sounds like so just the cost enters, so we will, are we saying that we, that will be on the next meeting or? The meeting after, I, I, I heard maybe two different things. I want to make sure I'm understanding that.
Um, I believe it was tentatively scheduled for the next meeting, um, but I, I, uh, there's a lot of things.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just don't want to get too far down because I think that's important conversation, because once we have that as a school committee, then we can kind of. You know, reconvene as a subcommittee and kind of process and how we want to do that. And, um, it's kind of a parallel, you know, in the budget for the FY. So that is one of our goals. I want to make sure that we, you know, we're, we're staying on that. And, um, and also budget wise, we, uh, we approved a lot of the subcommittee minutes. Um, from prior meetings. So if anyone wants to catch up, um, that I, that FY twenty-three planning folder that I, I've been trying to keep it updated. With documents and things as they've come in, um, but I also put a shortcut in there to approve minutes. So everyone wants to just kind of. It's a lot of stuff that's happening, but if you want to kind of hear the conversations, it might be a good place to kind of catch up a little bit. For members who aren't, aren't able to attend. And then, um, CPAC, um, is going to be co-hosting. One of its first sessions, um, on March twenty-eighth for Sarah Ward presentation for executive function. It's going to be in collaboration with, um, Concord, Hingham, Neshoba, North Borough, South Borough, CPAC's Maynard. I hope I'm not missing one. Um, and so that will be, um, registration, there was going to be a registration process. And so Jeff. I'll connect with you, um, on how we can get, um. So we can get communication out. There was an update to the flyer, so that's where, uh, the one that they, we, we have a flyer in the works. So it'll be. Everyone's really excited for it, um, and they do have another couple of series of presentations coming up after that as well for, um, for autism and. And so forth. So, um, exciting things happening there. The select board information, only other thing that I wanted to just share was feedback about, uh, townwide budget information. Was this luck board, um, or Justin made a presentation about, um. Creating a sewer, um, uh, enterprise fund. That would have a, every resident in Maynard would pay a fee, that annual fee that goes to this, and it would help fund the M. Is it the MS four, the M four, um, permit for, uh, our water. Just like the clean water and, uh, um. That they go. So anyway, so there was just some conversation there, but the commentary that I really took away from it, which is why I'm bringing this up. Was, um, two select board members, um, said, um, which I, it was like, hmm. That the cost of waiting is just, uh, you call, you spend more, which is the cost of waiting. And so I just think that same logic applies to school expenses as well. So I thought it was just really critical. Um, it was great to hear two select board members recognizing that the cost of waiting is worse for our town. I welcome that logic being applied to all expenses that we have as well. Um, and that's, that's, oh, the charter review, um. Uh, just, it's ongoing. There's some language that we've recommended to the bylaw committee about, um, reports. So there is going to be a proposed bylaw, um, hopefully not this, it's not going to be in this, um, this coming, um, town meeting, but probably in the fall. Um, but it will talk about, uh, reports, regular reports that the town administrator will have to provide to the town on quarterly basis for all departments.
Uh, Elizabeth?
Okay, I'll talk about the strategy subcommittee, and then you want to talk about the DEI maybe?
You can do it.
Oh, okay. Um, so strategies of committee, we met with the building principals as well as Brian and just sort of thought through. Um, what is happening in the schools there that is impressive and aligned with what we're, you know, with, with our central values. Um, and how we can make what they're doing clearer to the town. Um, we've been talking a lot about how the problem is, is that there's a lot of good things happening at the high school. Um, and then the people who are the parents of fifth graders are trying to make a decision about AMSA based on what they know about the high school. It usually is not very much because they aren't in the parent circles where they would potentially know how good our high school is too. Um, so we're trying, so a lot of, a lot of our talks kind of go back to what are we going to do to make sure that everyone knows what's happening in the schools? Um, and so that when they have to make those choices, they have the information that they need. Um, so we had a nice conversation with all the building principals about what, uh, what they're doing in their, in their, in their buildings that is specifically useful. For that. Um, and then the DI subcommittee meeting, we talked about, um. How we can organize our meetings to accomplish our school committee goal of gathering data this year. Um, figuring, and figuring out what the problem areas are that we need to adjust in future years in this, in this subcommittee. Um, so we have a good plan now. I think we have, we have made a plan. For, um, uh, subject specific meetings from now until June. And we have thought through so far a bit, the people we could invite to each of them to help us think through the issues and each of those meetings. So we're excited about that.
See, we have a personnel subcommittee this coming Wednesday. At nine, and then of course the joint budget review, February twelfth from nine to twelve. Um, and then the only other thing I had was, um. I. I got contacted, um, about the food services, um. Just the, the quality of the food. Um, and in that was, it was asked. When the contract for our food services, um, are, is coming up. So I don't know if somebody has. That answer off the top of their head, that would be helpful. And if not, if somebody could just get that to me, that would be great.
Wayne is, Wayne can talk.
Wayne just unmuted, so he may know.
Yeah, he does know.
Yeah. The contract is up, uh, at the end of this year. I'm currently writing the RFP that will go out. Um, that will open invitation for proposals from, um, whoever wants to participate in the process.
Great, thank you.
Um, okay, um, for the approval of minutes. Um, I think two of them we can probably approve, um, easily. The eleven, um, let's see what this is, the, um, ten twenty-one meeting. There's some more substance substantive, um, suggestions and changes. What are people's thoughts on that, those minutes?
The ten six, um. The only substantive thing that I wanted to highlight is that it was at Fowler, it wasn't remote. So, um. So that was, I mean, other, other stuff was grammatical, um, in nature for the ten six. So that, I felt that was a little substantive because it was location of where it was, um.
Sorry, I just meant like, there's, there's no discussion.
Yeah.
It's either.
It was or it wasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if everyone is agree with, with that, you know, with that particular one, if anyone else. It might be like without objection for the.
I was fine with it.
Okay, so how about without objection, I move to approve the minutes from, um, ten seven, twenty twenty-one. And ten six, twenty twenty-one? Okay.
I think I need to abstain though.
Oh, yes, probably, yeah. Um, do we need to, kind? Uh-oh, you're muted still.
Is that because you weren't here for those, Mauro?
Right.
You can abstain, but you can also, if you didn't have any real objections, you could vote. It's up to you.
Okay, I don't have any objections. I did look them over.
Okay. So, so will, will that, Pat, is that all set now from saying it first, or do I need to say it again?
I think you said, like, she's, she, no one had objections to them. So I think you probably are fine with the six and the seven.
So for the twenty-first, um, I'm, uh. Person, I don't think that, um, most of Natasha's comments I'm good with, with the exception of saying the field recommendations are from the field task force. Because the field task force was created after this meeting. These recommendations were from just, um.
Just internal.
Yeah.
Well, so that was where I was a little, okay, maybe, because I remember. So we talked about a task force in the budget subcommittee, and then I think it was Mary met internally with. So however that wants to be clarified, I just thought that was like the first version of the task force. Before then it got expanded to include external stakeholders, because it was the same, some of the same people, just, I don't know how you want to. Frame that, but it just was, it wasn't, um, it was the group of people, which is what I wanted to try to convey in the. In the, in the minutes. It wasn't just, you know, Brian presenting this, it was with, you know, discussions of a certain group of people. So whether we want to clarify who those people were, or. Yeah, I don't know the best way.
I just, I don't, I think that because we say the field task force to refer to the group of people who are meeting on a monthly basis. And they certainly weren't supportive or behind.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
So do we want to say then it was, you know, they just list people who were part of it then? Maybe that would be, so it was. Mary, Brian.
Brian, it was Mike, um, the athletic director, it was, um, Bob's, um.
Oh, Colleen.
Colleen.
Would it say a variety of, um, district and athletic stakeholders in Boys and Girls Club? Because I don't. Who's there?
So they weren't involved yet. So like Boys and Girls Club wasn't there. That was, I believe, just Mike and Mary.
Is this the meeting where Nikki came in on the Zoom though?
Nope, it was all before that. This was the first one, when it was brought up through the chairs report.
Maybe just like the internal field, I don't know however you want to frame that, but that's what I was trying to get at.
Even the initial group or, or something like that before the field task force.
And internal group.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or listing the people could work too, just to.
If there's any, we don't know who it was, then that's the only reason we wouldn't just say who they are.
Right.
I don't know who it was, but the people.
Well, I wasn't there either, so that's why I wasn't sure.
Should I just write it down on here now? Okay, Hillary's doing it. Okay, you want to do it, Hillary?
It was Mike, um, and then Bob.
Like Aria?
A D area.
Yep, and then Bob, um, our facilities manager. And who else? Was that it, Brian? Thought there was somebody else too, but.
Wayne.
Wayne.
Uh, Wayne was there. Yep, Wayne was definitely there. Yeah.
Bob, you have Bob there, Hillary.
I don't, I thought you saw his last name. What?
Savoy, S A V O I E.
Okay. I didn't want to guess.
I just rejected, I just took away my mind there and then since you, so it's clear and then.
Taking me today then.
Oh, yeah. Uh, and then I, um, was concerned with saying the consensus was that nobody should be exempt from this new fee schedule. Because I don't know that that was the consensus.
I agree, I don't.
Yeah. Yeah, that works. Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
I'll do, I got it. I got it. Don't worry, Hillary, you can, you can leave while I do the typing.
Okay, sorry. Okay, um, and then, uh, I wanted to, I didn't add it myself, but in the second to last paragraph where we say. Um, it was mentioned during the town, during the meeting that Maynard needs a higher than the other towns in this area. Um, I thought to write, um, the needs for, uh, social work assistants or a town social worker or something because. I don't know, like, I don't, I don't know that I would remember. That's what I was talking about in the future.
Okay, with that, just put it in so you can see what it looks like.
Yeah, um, so I'm good with the other changes too, but I, what, what do other people think?
And just to highlight, I know I added some stuff in, so it was about the music. You know, that consideration with fees and. Um, hearing more research about that. I don't think we, we had yet. So this is a good, actually jog my memory that, I think that's still kind of part of the. Maybe part of the conversation.
Can I make a suggestion that we make the changes and then we look at it again at the next meeting?
Do you want to table this to the?
Yeah, because I, I'm sort of, yeah, trying to do a catch up here and I'd rather us, I'd rather know exactly what the changes are and just make sure we're good.
Uh, I, I did find, um, just a couple of things, um, in that paragraph that you guys were just working on. Uh, it starts with Mr. Rivera.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Um, and then, um, the second pair, little paragraph. Under where it says chairs report on that same page, the bottle water filling station at Fowler, Fowler needs to be capitalized.
And bottled doesn't.
Yes. Sure.
Okay, so we'll table that one and then, um. Do, do any, Natasha or anybody, do any of these, um, warrants need to be separated out?
Um, yeah, I will be abstaining from, um, oh, um, six.
Okay, so, um, without objection, I move to approve warrants twenty-two dash oh two seven and twenty-two dash oh two eight. Okay, so if that's all set, then, um, roll call vote to approve, um, warrant twenty-two dash oh two six. Um, oh, sorry, Colleen. Okay, um, can I, I can make the motion. Okay, um, I move to accept warrant article twenty-two dash oh two six. Okay, so roll call vote to accept warrant article twenty-two dash oh two six. Um, Mary?
Yes.
Uh, Mauro?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Natasha?
Abstain.
And Hillary is a yes. Okay, um, and then I read the executive session statement and then we vote, or I vote first and then we read it.
You read it and then you just say, yeah, and then, and then you do roll call to enter and make sure you say that we're not, we're not coming back to, yeah.
Okay, um, executive session under MGL chapter thirty A, twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation with the Maynard Education Association and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. With the paraprofessional union, MESA, an open meeting may have, um, a detrimental effect on the litigating. Position of the public body and the chair so declares. The school committee will not return to open session. Okay, roll call vote, Mary?
Yes.
Mauro?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Hillary, yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you folks.